Have you been to Topco?
I have, yeah, Vegas. They have a nice one. When we went out there for furniture shows, some of the vendors would take us there.
Sure.
Entertainment.
Yeah, it was, the first time I went to one of those places was in Dallas at a Topco. It's conveniently, it was only like six blocks from my sister's house, so.
Uh, cool.
We'd run over there often enough.
Leave it six o'clock when I welcome you into the meeting of the Brandon City Council. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I said, welcome to all. We'll start with roll call.
Clark?
Here.
David?
Here.
Fish?
Here.
Jorgensen?
Here.
Cole?
Here.
Parliament?
Here.
Mayor Heintz?
Here. Uh, the agenda is in front of you. I would look for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have approval of the minutes from the January thirteenth briefing meeting in the January seventeenth regular meeting. If there's any corrections, additions.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
I'll say it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the two previous meetings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The claims are listed on pages ten through twelve. I know we looked through those. I don't think there were any questions. If not, if there are, fine. If not, again, we'll need approval.
Motion approved. Again.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims as listed. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Nothing on the consent calendar? At this point, I'm sorry.
Jim, do you mind if I just go?
Yes.
Under claims, the AB contracting, nearly half a mil, what was that?
That's for the water tower.
Okay. It says repairs. Is that not really accurate, more of just a payment? No, claims.
Oh, yeah, the year and the minutes. So that's last meeting's minutes.
Oh, yeah, okay, my bad. My bad.
Okay. Again, back to, uh, public comment. If there's an issue that anyone would like to speak to, we'd ask you to approach the podium, turn the mic on, state your name, address, and address your issue.
My name is Juanita Omen. I live at one zero zero eight East Aspen Boulevard in Brandon, South Dakota. And I'm here today of news that I learned on your meeting, that your approval of a dog kennel right across cattle corner to my property. I'm also cattle corner across from the daycare center. And when I retired and bought my property, I had concerns about the noise at the daycare, but figured it ended at a certain period of time, and kids are going to be kids, and I raised five of my own. So I know that they can scream and yell. But that was fine. I liked the property. And one of the reasons I liked the property is it had a fence that was six feet, wooden fence, and I had dogs. I've always had dogs. And it had inside that privacy fence, a dog run with a nice little door going out of the garage into the dog run. Well, within two years, I realized I couldn't use it because I constantly was called because my dogs were barking. And three times. First time, okay, he explained. The second time, I said, well, I'll try to control and limit their time out in the dog park, I mean, out in the dog run. The third time, my dog was inside my house, and I just happened to leave for a couple hours with the windows down. And I was informed that I was going to be sighted if they came out again. I take care of my mother, who is ninety years old. She has Alzheimer's, dementia, and she has manic, um, goes through manic periods. And this is triggered by noise. So I'd limit my time with her out in my own yard to compensate when the children out there. I don't want to have to compensate for dogs barking also, or not being able to put my windows down. Traffic. My mailbox has been hit four times with traffic going back and forth on Aspen because it's a pretty well-traveled road for the police and everybody else getting to the daycare or the gym and other places. Even the metal concrete light pole got knocked down across my property. I don't want additional commercial traffic in my neighborhood. It's my property. Now, I basically was, had the thought of maybe not buying it because of daycare, but now when I go to sell my property, I have to say, oh, you're going to be across a dog kennel? Um, I was, I can't even use my own dog run in my own yard. And I'm asking for an appeal of the people that have to live in your community. My mother, I have personal reasons. I can't afford for her going through manic moods because of noise in my area. I wish I had learned about this before y'all approved this because I would have been down at that point. There's also a sidewalk that runs right along this fence. The sidewalk is used many routes for the high school runners, for different events. And dogs do bark when they hear noises along the fences that they can't see. I don't know if you can guarantee, I know I can't guarantee if my dog hears something that startles him that he's not going to raise a ruckus. But I understand that there's going to be twenty-six dogs in this kennel, and that they're also going to wash. Where is the, is this going to go into the sewage? Is, am I going to have to smell when I open up my windows during the summer? I'm asking for an appeal not only because I feel denied, I can't even let my dogs out of my own yard without being sighted by the police, but you're going to let a business do the same thing? So I ask that you reconsider this because I live right there on the corner. The doodle, the Dragon's Doodle Buggs is one side, and now the dog kennel is going to be on the other side. And, um, dogs get loose. My dog has gotten loose, and I have a six-foot fence. I've always owned dogs. I've had dogs where I've opened the car door to take them into a kennel myself and then get loose from me. You got cars that are going to be swerving, then where are they going to be swerving to? My property. So I ask that you, uh, you reconsider this because my own mom's health is at risk because she will go through these manic attacks where she'll stay up for two and three days steady talking because she has gotten stimulation from noise outside. Thank you for listening.
What's your address?
One zero zero eight East Aspen Boulevard. It's right on the corner. The daycare is on one side, and this dog kennel now is going to be the other. And like I said, I don't want to have to not take my mom outside on my own, on my own property.
Well, first of all, thank you for your comments, and, yeah, you can sit down.
Thank you.
Uh, I applaud you for taking care of your mother. That's quite a commitment and appreciate that. Well, first of all, the, we have not passed this yet. This was the planning and zoning that, that did approve. Uh, it's an agenda item that still is not on the agenda tonight. It will be on, I believe, next, uh, meeting in two weeks. So certainly your comments are appreciated, and I think we'll spend more time talking a little bit more about it, and we'll explain a lot more about it, uh, in our meeting in two weeks. But for the record, our planning and zoning did approve it. They put a great amount of restrictions on the property. Whether or not those can be adhered to, certainly, I think everyone has concerns for. So it will be an agenda item in two weeks, but appreciate your comments.
Will they be, like, I was threatened sighted after three times. Is there a?
Do we have those published, Brian, the, uh, planning and zoning minutes from, no?
They're ready.
They're ready, yeah. I can't tell you exactly what they all were, but there, there was noise, there was odors, there was times, there was a lot of different restrictions.
Well, I got to the point where the only time my animals go out now is when they have to.
Sure. Is there, again, well, it is on the agenda in two weeks, so.
And should I come to that meeting in two weeks?
Sure can. I'm sure there'll be others.
Thank you for listening to me. I appreciate you all.
Any other public comments tonight? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to introduce our Assistant Finance Officer. She's been with us a little over a month now. She is here with her family, so she can introduce herself and her family.
Wow, that's great.
And he's going to be shy, of course.
You got a pretty scary mayor, so I don't blame you, kid.
Can you say hi? No. Who's on your boots? We are very Toy Story obsessed. So this is, I'm Tessa. Um, we actually just live two, three blocks over that way, so it's a nice drive. And then this is little Brody. He's two. And this is my husband, Nathan. He works over at HDR.
Okay, well, well, welcome.
Yeah, we're excited to be here and, yeah. Can you say hi? No, no. And then I graduated from McGorman, actually, too. Yeah, so. You ready? Should we go sit down? Can you say bye?
Well, welcome.
Thanks.
Uh, we do not have the public hearing then tonight, nothing? I have, uh, two proclamations. And, uh, got to make sure I get these right. This is twenty twenty-two oh one. Whereas the citizens of this city are extremely proud of this nation's more than two-hundred-year heritage of freedom and are loyal to the ideals, tradition, traditions and institution, institutions which have made our nation so great. And whereas their obvious dedication to our way of life is indicative of a strong, continued desire to preserve the priceless American heritage. And whereas they will be proud to stand up and publicly declare their determination toward actively and positively safeguarding our freedoms against any foreign or domestic enemies. Therefore, I, Jim Heintz, Mayor of the City of Brandon, hereby call upon all my fellow citizens to take full advantage of the special occasion known as Loyalty Day, celebrated annually throughout the nation on the first day of May, as an incentive for every true American to reaffirm his or her love of flag and country. And urge that all individual schools, churches, organizations, business establishments and homes within my official jurisdiction display proudly the flag of the United States of America and participate in public Patriotic Loyalty Day activities which are to be co-sponsored by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States and others on Loyalty Day, May one, twenty twenty-two. Signed, Jim Heintz, Mayor, and attested to by Christina Smith, Municipal Finance Officer. So we so appreciate the service of each and every one of all of our service people. And it's a pretty proud day to be able to claim that as Loyalty Day again. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you. Any questions? No, I think we're good. Same as last year. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next proclamation is Poppy Day proclamation. Whereas the annual sale of pop, Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States has been officially recognized and endorsed by governmental leaders since nineteen twenty-two. And whereas VFW Buddy Poppies are assembled by disabled veterans, and the proceeds of this worthy fundraising campaign are used exclusively, exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. And whereas the basic purpose of the annual sale of pop Buddy Poppies by the Veterans of Foreign Wars is eloquently reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living. Therefore, I, Jim Heintz, Mayor of the City of Brandon, South Dakota, do hereby urge the citizens of this community to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the purchase of Buddy Poppies on the day set aside for the distribution of these symbols of appreciation for the sacrifices of our honored dead. I urge all patriotic citizens to wear Buddy Poppy as mute evidence of our gratitude to the men and women of this country who have risked their lives in defense of the freedoms which we continue to enjoy as American citizens. Signed, Jim Heintz, Mayor, attested to by Christina Smith, Municipal Finance Officer. So two proclamations that will be put into the records. Any other comments? Okay.
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
Okay, we're ready.
Vicki's been up here borrowing money, so. Lisa, too. You might want to get the cash tonight. You never know. Okay, old business. I don't believe we have any. Uh, committee reports, golf course, retaining wall bids, Brian?
Uh, we opened bids on the retaining wall project out at the golf course. The engineer's cost estimate was nine hundred and ninety thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars. The lowest bidder, lowest and only bid, was two million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, five twenty-two seventy-five. Staff's recommendation, as well as the consultant engineers, to reject the bid and rebid at a later date.
Think everyone wants to motion a second on that?
Yeah.
We have a motion and a second that we would reject the two-point-two-million-dollar bid on the retaining wall. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, just a quick question for Brian. So looking forward, when would we try to re-bid this? Are we going to wait on engineering?
No, we'd probably look June, July.
Yeah, some of the contractors are busy up until July.
So maybe bidding it out and doing a fall project, and then they can finish it up in the spring. It's probably a little bit more reasonable.
Okay. So we do have a motion and a second to reject the bid. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, twenty twenty-one season report, Andrew?
All right, hopefully I can deliver a little more positive news than that. Twenty twenty-one was another positive step in a good direction for us. Uh, we did twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine rounds, um, which is up about twenty-five hundred from last year. Uh, and last year, as you see over the, the previous four, was up, um, quite, quite substantially from eighteen and nineteen. Playable days helped out a lot. We had two hundred and twenty-three, so the weather was good. It seems like a lot, but when you put it in perspective, still two twenty-three is sixty-one percent of the year. So our bills are still paid a hundred percent of the year. So we've really got that short window to, for lack of a better term, make hay while the sun is shining. Um, so we took advantage of it this year. And then to put that in a little more perspective, from last year, that, that rounds played number is about six more rounds per day on average. And when you think about, you know, how do we get one golfer, two golfers, it doesn't seem to add up too much. But that six a day can be up to worth, uh, seventy thousand dollars over the course of a year by adding that many. So each golfer we get is worth almost twelve thousand dollars that we can add extra a day. So I feel like we've done a really good job the last couple of years of providing that experience where people are going to want to come out, come back. It starts with customer service. It starts with a good golf course. I can do everything in the world that's, uh, good and right, but if we don't have a good golf course, it's not going to matter. So a big thank you to Kelly Eilers, our superintendent, and his staff. They did a wonderful job with the golf course. Especially after the flooding we had in twenty nineteen. I know we still are working on some stuff out there. Um, but they do an excellent job, and, and we really appreciate them. Um, when you look at the breakdown of who is utilizing the course, forty-two percent of our play were daily green fee payers. Thirty-three percent were season pass holders. Fourteen percent, um, were part of outings or corporate events. And eleven percent were juniors. So I'm really pleased with how we broke that down. If you, to put it another way, fifty-six percent of our rounds between green fees and outings were, uh, paid per round. Um, that's always going to be our highest grossing revenue per round, is those paid per round, uh, revenue rounds. Um, so I'm really pleased with that. So that equated to a, a really positive year in O and M. Remember, O and M is our cost to operate the golf course, our revenue expenses, um, not including our debt or capital improvements we do. This year, we, uh, had a positive O and M of two hundred and ninety-four thousand, five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Or to put it another way, we were up four hundred and seven percent since two thousand and eighteen and a hundred and thirty percent, a hundred and thirty-six percent over last year. So really positive numbers. Um, and the total revenues are increasing as well. We're at, uh, one point two six four million this year. Thirty-two percent over four years ago, twenty-one percent over last year. So those numbers continue to increase. And then when you really break it down, the, uh, the main driver behind that is our, our pro shop sales. That's where it's mostly coming from. So the O and M for the pro shop accounts for the grounds department as well, so the money spent on labor and maintenance of the actual golf course. Uh, this year, our, our positive O and M was two hundred and ninety-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four. So pretty similar percentage increases, um, of the total O and M. And the biggest, uh, reason for that is revenue increases there. Um, we've gone from five hundred and, about five hundred and eleven thousand in two thousand and eighteen to eight hundred and forty-two thousand, almost, in two thousand and twenty-one. So that's been the, uh, the big reason for the jump there. And, um, so in it, within that pro shop revenue, there's, there's four categories that make up ninety-six percent of the revenue in the pro shop. So this is on page two of the document I provided. The first is green fee revenue, so what a golfer pays, uh, to play golf out there, um, that's just for the golf. It doesn't include cart. Um, that increased to three hundred and almost, yeah, about three hundred and fourteen thousand this year, um, which is really good. I think, uh, about, I think we budgeted two twenty-five in our forecast, so we far exceeded that. Then cart fee revenue was pretty similar, three hundred and sixteen thousand, almost three hundred and seventeen thousand. So that continues to increase, which is good. I think I'd been in this, uh, position, uh, in interim capacity for about seven days when I came to the city council and, and asked to upgrade our cart fleet. Um, and I think that decision, and you guys believing in me to do that, is paying huge dividends year in and year out. We had eleven-year-old carts then, and that goes back to the golfers per day. Eighty percent of our golfers ride, and you spend almost ninety percent of the time while you're playing in the cart. So if you're an old clunker that has a high likelihood of breaking down on you, your experience might be pretty negative. So we've really, uh, we've really turned that cart part into a positive experience, and I think it shows in, uh, in our revenues on, on that. Season pass revenue is really positive this year. It's been pretty steady over the years, uh, no matter what, uh, what kind of year it is. Uh, this year, we increased it to almost a hundred and eight thousand. So we hit our budget forecast there for the first time in, that I've, I've ever seen since I've been here. So I'm extremely pleased with that. Um, and then our merchandise in the pro shop, our revenue increased to seventy-one thousand. Um, a big driver in that is the boys' high school golf team was fortunate to get a, a pretty large donation. Um, and they were kind enough to spend about fifteen thousand of that through us ordering stuff. So really, uh, merchandise is kind of the, the same revenue-wise without that where we've been. But our margins are getting better. The margins are pretty tight in merchandising golf. So to have forty-one percent last year and thirty-six percent this year is, is a really good thing. So those numbers are all good, but, I, I mean, you can look at them, they're increasing, but what do they really mean? So a golf consulting firm, a worldwide, uh, consulting firm called, uh, Global Golf Advisors indicates that, uh, four main, uh, key performance indicators that you should really pay attention to. Um, the first is your tee time utilization. The second is your round revenue yield versus your highest yielding round revenue, your merchandise margins and your labor expenses. Uh, in tee time utilization, they indicate that healthy golf courses are at about fifty to sixty-five percent. So that utilization is, uh, all the slots we have available on our tee sheet would be one. So each time, a tee time, so every ten minutes at ours is, has four, four slots. So if a twosome goes out at ten o'clock, their tee time utilization for that is fifty percent for that, those slots. So throughout the year, um, they indicate a healthy golf course uses fifty to sixty-five percent. Uh, we are just over sixty-five percent on our utilization. And then that, that statistic kind of goes hand in hand with your, um, revenue per round yield. Um, ours was, uh, forty-two dollars per round, uh, and our highest yielding round is fifty-eight, fifty. So that's about seventy-two percent. Uh, and they indicate healthy golf courses between seventy and eighty percent. So we're within the healthy range on that as well. Uh, merchandise margins, um, which is pretty self-explanatory. Um, they, they indicate a healthy golf course is between twenty-five and thirty-five percent, and ours was thirty-six percent this year. And then the biggest one, they indicate, and I, I feel it's a big one, too, is your, is your labor. So they indicate healthy golf courses, uh, total expenses, the labor will be about fifty-two to fifty-eight percent. And for two thousand and twenty-one, we were at fifty-four percent. So I'm, I'm extremely pleased, and that makes me optimistic, that the indicators are there, that the golf course is healthy, were priced correctly, were utilized efficiently. Utilization's going to be a big thing over the next couple of years. Uh, I know Sioux Falls has indicated their, their, uh, utilization is somewhere between eighty and eighty-five percent. And they, I know they have some concerns going forward about having available play. Hopefully, we learned our lesson from the early two thousands or late nineties that we don't need to build a million golf courses and then have too many golf courses, too many golf holes, and not enough players. And we can, and everyone kind of goes about that in a smart way, but it will be an issue because the other competitor in Sioux Falls is probably close to a hundred percent utilization. So, so that's a positive for us as well. It means more golfers are coming our way. And then some other positives, and National Golf Foundation, um, released their twenty twenty-one demographic statistics. The largest demographic that is playing golf is eighteen-to-thirty-four-year-olds, which is huge. That's the first time that's ever been the case. Younger people are playing. They'll continue to play. And then while those younger people are playing, over the next ten years, the largest subset of the baby boomers are retiring. And they will be playing golf as well, more rounds of golf. That means more, more rounds, more revenue for everybody. So there's, there's cause to be, I know, we've had great weather. We've had a couple good years with COVID, got a lot of people out. But now it's our job to kind of continue that and continue doing things that keep people coming. And by all indications, there's going to be plenty of golfers. That, we have no excuses that we can't continue this. Some highlights of the year. Oh, I, my favorite stat was junior golf has steadily increased over the last few years. It's up about five hundred thousand nationwide. And the biggest reason is, in the last twenty years, they've gone from fifteen percent female junior participation to thirty-six percent. So that's really exciting. That's half the population that the golf world's probably been missing for sixty years. And it, and it seems like they're getting more into, having a daughter myself, that's exciting. Hopefully, she has a bunch of friends. She, she'll want to get out and play. Cross my fingers. Um, so then to go on to junior, we had our junior clinics again through the summer rec program. Uh, we do, uh, every Tuesday for the month of June, we had a clinic, uh, two sessions. Um, the max capacity was fifty, and we had fifty-one. So I, I, it's hard to turn anyone away, so we're at capacity for those, which is positive. We held, uh, one SDGA state tournament. Um, the adult junior and junior championships are done in conjunction with each other. Um, that was July twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh, uh, Sunday, Monday and a Tuesday. We had over, uh, we had six hundred and seventy-six players participate in the two events, um, which is a, a lot. That's a lot of, um, golfers having tournament rounds, had over a hundred carts on site every day and didn't have enough. In between, since it's a junior event, pretty much every child had two parents with them, a lot of grandmas, a lot of grandpas, aunts, uncles, friends. And my rough estimate is that probably about, about two thousand to twenty-five hundred people to town, um, to the golf course to watch that event. So that was pretty exciting. It was a fun three days. was pretty exciting. It was a fun three days. We have our five big normal tournaments every year, one in May, one in June, one July, one August, one September. The interesting thing I found from kind of looking at this, about eighty percent of the participants are not from Brandon. We had a little over 800 total participants in those. So we're bringing a ton of people to town to play in those events. The golf course is in its best shape for those events. Kelly really puts in a lot of extra work, so they get to see the golf course at their, at its best, and hopefully that keeps them coming back. And utilization for those, we're at over 90% filled on those. So people are participating in our events, they're coming back, continue to have a good time at them. We did do a new Tuesday night league this year. It was a little different concept. It was non-commitment league. So if, if you had something come up, you didn't have to find a sub, scramble for subs. Had a lot of positive feedback. Had over 700 players participate in that. So an average of 50 players a week. It's a nine hole at 6 o'clock. So after work, people were able to come out and get together and, and have fun. So like I said, a lot of positive feedback. I'm expecting some pretty big growth in that for 2022, from what I'm hearing from people. We did three really big key capital improvements. We got that bank stabilization project done, finally. It took a while, but we got there. New heating and air conditioning unit for the community room. So hopefully, that'll help drive a little more business up there, make it a little more tolerable when it's 95 degrees out. And we painted the interior of the clubhouse. So if anyone had been there before, it was dark maroon and a weird orange color before. Now it's some nice light grays and whites. Really brightened the place up. It's amazing what a little bit of paint can do. And then maybe the most exciting thing is we made the final payment on the loan for the clubhouse and the new nine holes in November. So that debt has been retired, and, and I know we've been looking forward to that a long time. I don't think it's quite the, the big boom that everyone was hoping for 10 years ago, but it'll be nice to have that taken care of. So it was a positive year all in all. I'm really excited about 2022. It seems like it's going to be here sooner than later, the way things are going. But I expect good things again. So if anyone has any, anything to add or any questions, go ahead.
Well, first of all, Andrew, great job that we, and I hear nothing but positives about the condition of the course. And you're to be commended for, for the enthusiasm you've brought to that course is indicative of, of your leadership. So.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We did, we did add GPS.
I'll put in that app.
Yeah. They, they finally came in in October. I know we were open for spring, so we got those on there. I have started selling ads now. I got, I just put a little thing on Facebook on Thursday. I've sent it over to the chamber. So hopefully, she's going to have that sent out. Probably start making some drop-ins and phone calls. I've got like, I was planning on only selling a few and not filling it all the way up, but with the enthusiasm for it, I was down, what I was planning on selling, I was down to five by this morning, but I think I'm going to sell some more. So, because the goal is to just pay for them, but now I think it could be a pretty good revenue stream for us. So.
So how many do you have per sale?
Well, I was going to sell 24 and then keep three for our own, so we'd have 27 ads total. So two on every other hole, one on every hole, but I think I'm just probably going to go till we don't have any space left.
How many can you put on cart?
The max would probably be 36 total, two per hole. You wouldn't want to go more than that. I think it'd get pretty convoluted. I think 36 would be a lot, but kind of trial and error this year and, and see how it goes.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda, and I don't know if this was set up this way or not, but it's a wage adjustment for Andrew Bauer. Anybody got a problem with that?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second to, for the payroll change for Andrew. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Also have a payroll change for Kelly Eilers. And I just was going to say, make sure Kelly knows that we do appreciate. I hear so many good comments about the condition of the course. Jack has a motion.
Let me, yep, let me jump in there on this one. So, yeah, motion to approve Kelly's pay raise as well.
Okay.
A motion and a second to approve. Comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to parks and rec. I hope your work report is on page 25. There's any thing there. Pool, pool improvement project pay application number 12, page 26. Any comments there, Christina?
This releases most of the retain, or the retainage. We kept back about $10,000 just for some small cleanup items that they'll do this spring before the pool opens again.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve the pool improvement project. Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mower bid, I'm sorry, Aspen Park roadway and utility improvement project closeout.
These are some new documents that we're going to start trying to use this year when we close out a project. For the most part, they just signify the substantial completion date and that we are taking over the project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and, and a second to approve the Aspen Park utility improvement project. Any questions?
Yep, good one. So how, with this new change, how will that affect, uh, retainage?
So we won't do these closeout documents until, or we won't get, release all the retainage until all of these closeout documents are done. Yeah. Because there's a few other documents too that we mail to the contractor, and we have all of their subcontractors sign off saying that they were paid as well. Yep.
Okay. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. About mower bid. Believe this is in the budget, so.
Yep, low bid, low quote was submitted by Doug's Paint and Body in the amount of
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions? Comment? Hearing none. All in favor of approval say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A, we have a wage adjustment for Nick Gunderman.
Since hiring, since hiring Nick, he's obtained his spring license as well as his CDL, which moves him up on the salary scale to Parks Maintenance III. He will attend pool, get his pool certification this spring.
Motion to approve.
Be a motion and a second to approve the wage adjustment for Nick Gunderman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Be park surplus, Brian, you're.
Well, we have a fairly large audience tonight, so if anybody wants a bench, or a picnic table, or a garbage can holder, or a portable backstop, we still have them available for your purchase.
I thought Jack was taking that backstop. He seems to have some affinity.
He retired, he retired.
If I knew I could get 10 bucks out of the scrap, I'd work.
Since we didn't get any quotes for him, or, or bids for him, we'd like to take them to the scrap. Yeah.
Motion to approve.
I have a babysitter.
No, you're fine. Thank you. We have a motion, I believe, to, and a second to discard the park surplus property. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Police report is there for you to look at. Inspection report, Brian, is there anything there?
Nope, nothing. Nothing unusual.
No. The 2022 fire contract.
Fire department approached the council a month ago to take a look at the audit review requirement that we have currently in the contract. Christina contacted Quaum and Bergland. They will no longer do reviews. They will do either a compilation, which is basically just putting the fire department's numbers on their own spreadsheet, or an audit. Both of those would, the, the compilation, I believe, the cost was 3,000, which is what we were paying for the review. The audit was 6,000. Christina did reach out to.
Lush CPA. They have indicated that they would do a review. Her cost came in at approximately $6,000.
So, not sure what to do. I, I recommended some different language in the contract that would allow the city to audit their books at any time. I don't think the, the two options from Quaum and Bergland, you know, the compilation really doesn't, doesn't do anything for us. It doesn't look at any policies or procedures. The audit is fairly expensive at 6,000.
We just checked with the one firm. I believe Evil and Heard was brought up as well, as somebody to check with.
Have not checked with them yet. But we can.
I, I, I mean, it's a substantial budget, and to not do anything, to me, does not seem, you know, what we should do. So I, I think if we could table this and try and get one more bid, I would, I would take a look at that before we make any kind of a decision.
Deborah would be in favor of that. And I think we should, we've got a hopeless policy for estimates for one local. Why not get one for another?
We can.
I do too. I think, let's just wait on that, Brian.
Mm-hmm.
So do you need a motion for that?
No.
Uh, Loyalty Day Parade. Is there anything there that needs to be done, Brian?
Yep, you need to approve the, the route scheduled for May 1st. The route is the same it's historically been, starting at the high school parking lot, down Holly to Main, and then ending in front of VFW.
Have a motion and a second to approve the Loyalty Day Parade. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Under administration tax increment district number seven, resolution 1022.
Resolution 1022 would adopt TIF district number seven for the Encore Park development on the west side of town. It allocates eight and a half million dollar grant to Encore Park LLC to be paid back over approximately 20 years through the increase in property tax payments. And that's to pay for the public infrastructure and interest. Need a motion to approve.
I will need to approve this.
Have a motion and a second to approve the tax increment district number seven, resolution number 1022 tax. TIF. Any questions?
Just as a reminder, the city is not incurring debt on this. We're not issuing any bonds. This is what we, what I call anyway, a pay-as-you-go TIF, so the developers are fronting all the money. So there's virtually no risk for the city if, heaven forbid, something happens. But we fully anticipate that it will be up and running sooner than, than we can think of. And the sooner they get things built, the sooner they will receive the increments back.
This is what Toby spoke to us about, right, on Thursday?
Yep.
From the state.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any question, further questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two tax abatement requests.
Correct. Both of them, I, I think are elderly.
One's an elderly and one is a veteran.
Okay, good.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve the two tax abatements.
Both were recommended by the county.
Correct. Good. Thank you, Brian. Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Engineering consultant list.
This was a policy that was approved back in 2018. It breaks down projects in three different levels. There's level one, which is projects that are less than 100,000. Level two, which is projects from 100,000 to 300,000, and then level three projects, which are everything over 300,000. As part of the policy, it's in there that we need to approve the 10 consultants for level one projects. And so I did put that list on there of what I'm recommending, and that's FHU, HDR, DGR, ISG, IME, DGR, HR Green, A2S, Altec, and Stockwell. Currently, we do work with pretty much every one of those except for HR Green. They've, they've seemed very interested in our projects, but we have not awarded anything to them as of yet. I know there are other consultants that are very good, like CDI is one, Banner's one. They're very good engineers, but they haven't shown any interest in working in the city of Brandon for these projects. So that's why they did not add them to the list.
So is this a new policy? We have not previously had this?
No, we approved the policy in 2018.
Okay. So this is.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second to, to approve the engineering consultant list. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, before you get to this one, I'm going to recuse myself from item four.
Thank you. Item four is cannabis licenses.
Chief Stappel and I, I misspelled his name, I'll admit it, reviewed the license applications for, for the three selected cannabis dispensaries, as well as the four cultivation applications that we received to date. No major items that stood out. We're recommending that those listed, for cannabis dispensary, MISD Property Holdings, Shangri-La SD LLC, Dakota Herbs LLC be granted dispensary license, and then cultivation licenses approved for Shangri-La SD LLC, Crichton Barber, Decels LLC, Native Roots LLC, and Dakota Gardens LLC at the addresses shown.
Brian, I don't know if this is a question you can have due or not, but can you put names with the, the LLCs?
As far as, officer, yeah, I can. I can get it to you.
I'm curious, more so than anything.
Yeah, I can, I can send out an email.
So, I'm questioning here.
Before we talk about it.
Oh.
Yeah, let's.
I will move to approve.
Have a motion and a second to approve the cannabis licenses.
I don't know if I can say this either, but I'm just curious. So Tim, are you one of these people? Is this why you're recusing yourself, or?
But if you read Dakota Gardens LLC, and I might be related to that person, and if you look at 723 North Split Rock, I might also be related to the person who owns the building.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to approve the cannabis licenses that Brian stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
So we, so we're full for the dispensaries then, if these all go through?
Correct.
And, and the cultivation, we have up to 10?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep. So next step is, some of them have already applied for their conditional use permit. One of them is, at least one has received theirs already. The other ones will come in. I think they were waiting to, to get approved from the council. They'll get in, get their conditional use permits. We'll ship off the necessary forms to the state, and then the state will review their application at that level. And then at some point in the future, I'm sure we'll hear back from the state that, their determination.
So what kind of conditional uses did the, did Zee put on these?
Uh, the one conditional use that was approved so far is a cultivation license up in the industrial, in the Corson, in the Roebang Industrial Park. The only conditions they placed on there were to, to make sure that the activity is in compliance with the city and state regulations. Yeah, I mean, there's 130-some pages of state regulations. So.
Suppose they have conditions, but you guys consider anything that you don't.
Okay. On the agenda next is resolution, transfer of funds.
This is for a late bill that, not late, but just end of year bill that came in for the Iron One project. So this would clear out that project end of year last year.
See, in the amount of 1,193.45.
Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the transfer of fund. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City Hall discussion. City Hall Discussion.
Bringing it back again. We got a quote to install new audio in the council chambers here in a range from 25 to almost $30,000. So it piqued our interest as to how much money do we want to continue investing in these buildings without doing some type of planning for the future here and reviewing of our existing buildings to see what type of structural condition they're in. So we had, uh, this goes back to January of 2021. We had a proposal from ISG to conduct, uh, some architectural services on our two existing buildings. Uh, one thing was to review the structural conditions and then make some recommendations as to what we can do to improve, um, the buildings. So no decisions at this point in time, but we would like some direction. Cause at some point in the, in the near future, we're going to have to do something.
Well, I think that was sort of the intent for purchasing the home and whether or not this is going to be the area that City Hall remains. Or are we looking at different grounds?
Well, we looked, you know, we, we did the, we did the space needs study, uh, 2020. Cost for a brand-new complex, City Hall Police Department was 8.3 to 9.2 million. We did look at a location, uh, on, on Redwood, which was probably cost prohibitive to obtain the property. So, you know, with that in mind, if you look at the available property in town, there's not, there's not really much available for us. Uh, and that, that property that is available is primarily in general business districts. We don't have enough general business properties now, and that's, you know, we don't want to take out prime commercial uh, sales tax generating property for a, a tax exempt, non-tax paying facility like us. So, you know, we, we really need to take a look at what we're going to do here. You know, we've, we've had some roof issues in both buildings. Raleigh said there's water coming someplace back here. So, it, it's just bits and pieces here and there. Um, we really need to figure out what we're going to do.
I think this is where we need to think outside the box and other things that we can do. I just can't justify spending this kind of money on City Hall when this council wasn't even ready to put down the money toward, and annex part of the city for a future school and 80 acres of development. But we're willing to look at an eight to nine million dollar project for City Hall when we have our residents and infrastructure needs and everything else. So I understand it's not ideal, but I feel like you could look at alternative solutions that might help us get a better workspace or something other than building this big, huge City Hall when our citizens have a lot of needs, not wants, right now.
We're not proposing a new City Hall. We're proposing to take a look at what we've got here and what we can do here.
We're not looking at an eight to nine million dollar. The, the study that we did was looking big picture, and that was really looking, trying to get 20 years out to, to, if we're going to build something. We would be more looking at doing something here, and it would be much smaller scale, and, you know, what do we need now, and then just the near future, like five years. So it'd be much smaller scale.
So with the, I'm going to call it sound system. If that's needed, I mean, obviously, can't that be something that could be used here, wherever, and moved at some point if it's something that we are desperately in need of right now?
Probably could be.
I mean, typically, they can be. If it's stated, although if we're five to 10 years out, by then, new technology will be.
It'll be outdated when we open the box.
But I, I think we have to make what we have work as well as we can. And I, I hate to think of Brandon in the light of, let's just get by. I, I just don't think that's who we are. So I think we need to at least look at this, consider this, and if our mentality is to just get by, I don't know, not much in favor of that.
So, uh, what are you proposing here? A remodel of this, or, or design work, or?
Yeah. First, it would be a review of the current structures. You know, the, the main part of the City Hall is a bank that was built in the twenties? I think. And then it's been added on to, you know, recently, uh, there's a light above the back door to my office that went out. Larry came in and tried to fix it. He can't trace the wiring. He has no clue where it goes to. And it's, it's the old cloth-covered wiring from what he could find, but disappears into the wall and then. And then we have plumbing that we're not quite sure where it goes to. So we need to take a look at structurally, are these buildings structurally sound enough that we should invest money in remodeling? And then how do we make it a more efficient use of space?
Brian, I, I would suggest that we schedule a special work night just to talk about that. I think it's too big of a discussion to sort of make any kind of recommendation, and I, I would preface that by saying we probably need to do some homework into some, you know, we probably need to meet first and then go from there as to what we, what we would wish for, and then. So I would like to see that happen in the next month, six weeks.
Yep, didn't, didn't anticipate a decision tonight. We just put it on the agenda as discussion just to get everybody thinking about what we're going to do. You know, as we're hiring some additional staff.
Are you, as a council, okay with scheduling a work night to do that? I would leave that up to you, maybe on off Monday here?
Yeah. As, you know, we're, we're looking at hiring additional staff with the Development Director and hopefully the Engineering Tech. We're kind of running out of space to put them. Maybe.
So would this involve any kind of input from, uh, architects or builders or anything? I got the work session, or?
No.
Yeah, we could, we could.
ISG's done some work for us and looked at it. We could certainly invite them in.
I think, for me, it'd be nice to hear some input from some of these contractors or engineers. I don't know if it needs a whole-blown engineering redesign.
No, I, it, well, it gets back to structurally, what do we got? What could, I, I mean, what are the bones? After that, how can we lay it out? I've, I've got a, you know, I think all of the staff have at least an idea of what could be done. And, believe me, we probably have differing viewpoints. But I think some, some additions, um, some remodels could certainly be put in place.
When they did the space study, didn't they follow up with an anticipated dollar amount on a study, structural study? Cause we, we all turned that down. But I don't remember how much they were proposing.
Well, ISG, it's in the, it's in the proposal that's in your packet from 2021. It's about 30,000. Eight thousand for the structural analysis and 20,000 for concept floor plan, 22,000 for concept floor plans.
I guess if we're going to proceed with this in a work session, I think we need to circle back to the CIP as well. Because if we're all of a sudden going to put an emphasis on something that we've already kind of slotted in our formal CIP, it doesn't feel right to just pull something out of that.
I think, again, that's something during that work session, we can, can do that. So I think.
I, if I remember correctly, I believe that we had this number before we did the CIP, and we decided not to do anything with this number because we were going to do the CIP. Is that right? Something like that. Anyway. And so when ISG comes in, will they? Will they, they'll look at possibly remodel, because I believe the one thing that they did with the space needs study was to eliminate the buildings and just build a new one. Right?
Correct.
Nobody looked at remodeling what's currently here.
The space needs study was basically all new facilities. Either at this location. There were a couple of different options, which included possibly buying additional properties as well as a second story. And then there was the, the big one that would, that we looked at the property north of the Methodist Church. Which would have been a whole new facility on a different location. But no, I don't, I don't recall in that we've looked at remodeling what we've got.
Not in the space needs study. This one is looking at kind of doing a cost comparison, you know, remodeling, but also kind of looking at the cost of building new. So it'll look at both.
What did we pay for that space needs study?
We'll have to find out.
If you can get it at the meeting.
That's for, that's for this one.
Yeah, that's for that one.
That's for the, the one that ISG proposed a year ago.
I think the, I think the real key, as Brian indicated, is are these buildings worth remodeling? I mean, this thing, the back wall leaks, and if we got a leak there, there pretty soon, um, we have to wonder about that. But I, yeah. We've already paid for one study, so I'd like to see if we could do something without spending a whole bunch more on another study.
We'll look at the calendar. We'll get ahold of ISG to make sure when they're available.
I, I think that's a good starting point, anyway. Moving on to Streets, Work Report. Item number two is Core Phase Two Project Purchase Agreement with Brandon Valley School District.
Uh, Core Area Phase Two A does bid this week, so Thursday at 10 o'clock. Fingers crossed we get good bids. We have a few contractors that are interested in the project. Not as many as what we have had in the past. So expect prices to be higher than normal. This is a purchase agreement with, um, Brandon Valley School District. They are gifting us or selling it to us for a dollar, about two acres for detention pond site. That's just south of the Brandon Elementary School.
Would that be south and east a little bit?
Southeast corner of Brandon Elementary.
Oh, including the, like, the football field, so that'd be.
Like, south of the football field. It's the area that. Every rains or spring melted, there's usually water standing there, and then it crosses Elm Street and goes um, through that property that we purchased from Larry Narum behind the Alliance Building, and then makes its way out to Second.
Should this be a detention pond then? Is that the plan?
Yep.
Um, it's a little over two acres, and it's about four feet deep at the deepest part of it. But it gradually gets deeper. It doesn't quite make the 100-year design, but it's pretty close. It's a lot better than what we have now.
So Tammy, when you put those in, though, especially being so close to a school and residential area, are there signs and stuff that you put up or do something to kind of warn kids?
No, so there should only be water in there when it's raining. And then it should empty out pretty quickly. Um, it is supposed to be a dry pond. So there are, there will be pipes underneath of it too, to keep it, keep it dry. So there, it won't be super muddy or anything like that. School District wanted to be able to mow it. Um, there won't be a fence. If it becomes an issue, then we'll have to revisit it, and all of that is in the agreement too, that we'll revisit with the school if it becomes a problem.
Staff and the engineers have been working with the school to make sure that we're addressing their stuff. That's why it's, it's fairly shallow.
Yeah, it's very.
At the north end, so that, you know, they can still utilize it if they want to.
That's a really great, um, coordination between city and school, so thanks for putting that together, and to the school for doing that.
So we need it. We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase agreement with the Brandon Valley School. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Aspen Boulevard Guard Rail Repair.
Um, if you look at page 119 in your packet, you can see that guard rail is in very poor condition, and it has been for some time. The reason why we have to have the guard rail there is our ditches are pretty steep, so it's a safety concern along Aspen Boulevard. And I did ask the county if we could remove them and just put up delineators, and they said no. We had to keep this stretch across Aspen Boulevard, cause that is still county road jurisdiction. What I'm proposing is that we remove the whole guard rail, and then we would put in two new anchor points along Aspen Boulevard so that the actual guard rail, that cable guard rail, will be straight. Because right now, when they try to tension it, it just pulls all of those, uh, posts together, and they can't keep them up. There's too much erosion and everything else around it. And then around the entrance, they will put in some tubular delineators, so you can see it from ever, every direction going towards it. And then we'll put in some parking stops at the parking lot there, so that cars know where to stop and not go in the ditch. So that total is just over 13,000. And that would come out of the Street Maintenance Fund.
Entertaining motion. A motion and a second to approve the guard rail project. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Streetlight Agreement with Sioux Valley Energy.
Um, we've always had an agreement with Sioux Valley Energy, but our agreement was missing some language as far as street reconstruction projects and what we paid for and what we did not pay for. All the streetlights in town are the ones that Sioux Valley Energy maintains for us. We kind of rent those on a monthly basis. And so there was a lot of discussions the last couple of years on what we should be paying for installation and removal and that sort of thing. So this agreement just kind of sets a baseline for all of that work. So we know exactly how much, uh, they'll charge us to remove a post and put one back in and that sort of thing.
One, one other option besides, uh, this. So this is basically, uh, job by job, work, work by work that comes up. Pole, especially if we pay for a pole or a light pole out, maybe a light.
Yeah, so like in the core area, we have a lot of wooden posts. And so when there's a wood pole and they take it down, then they put up the new one and they don't charge us. Now, if there's an aluminum pole that's up to new standards, and we need them to take it down for a reconstruction project and then put it back up, then they charge us, I think it was 325 to take it down and 325 to put it back up. Or sometimes we're moving them because we're adding in sidewalks, or we have a curb ramp in the way, or something like that. So. It makes it a lot easier for us to figure out the cost of a project before it goes to bid.
Do you like that, the, um, pay-as-you-go type thing, as, as opposed to a solid service contractor, something like that?
Um, I think we've always had that. I don't know if Brian, you know anymore?
I think they used to not charge us, and then they started charging us, and that kind of started creating the problem because we didn't know how to really estimate what we were going to get charged. So this has taken about two years to get this agreement together with them.
Do we need a motion? Yes, please.
A motion and a second to, uh, approve the streetlight agreement with Sioux Valley Energy. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to Water and Sewer, we have the 2022 Chemical Bits, separate agenda.
Uh, prices reflect, I think, the current bidding environment and, and supply chain issues. You know, for instance, the price for chlorine gas went up 35% over last year. You know, the, the other large increase is the LPC 9 is up 26% over last year. So we're seeing a fairly significant estimate if we use the same or close to the same quantities in chemicals from last year to this year. But the Hawkins was a little bit.
A motion and a second to approve the chemical bid. Questions? Answers? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Water Tower Change Order.
Yep, this would be change order number two. This is for the AV Biggie Building that is located at the golf course. When they were tying into the existing utilities, which run along Aspen Boulevard, they realized that utilities and the plans were actually swapping the water in the sewer. And so we had to pay for a little bit extra pipe there and some extra valves. So that total is 24,064 dollars.
Other questions or comments, or? A motion and a second to approve the Water Tower Change Order. A motion and a second to approve the water tower change order number two. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Purchase Agreements for Drainage Areas in the Bluffs and Heartland Business Park.
These are partly some cleanup items. It is pretty common in town where we have some drainage areas that developers have not been maintaining because they built them and then they built their houses and then they were just never dedicated to the city. So we are getting after them this year to clean some of those up and then start the process of dedicating those to the city so that we can maintain those. There are two in the bluffs that are pretty small. Sioux Cup did some maintenance work to them this last summer and this last fall, so they are cleaned up and pretty decent. We'll see how they get seeded in the spring here. And then they had to replant a drainage area that goes along the backside of some houses. And I am working with Sioux Cup on that this week to finalize some of that cleanup. They have to remove a few trees. And then there is one in Heartland Business Park. That one was supposed to be a BMP, but we are now running our sewer main through there and hopefully our sewer force main through there. And so we would like to take that one over so we can construct those two projects. And then that drainage, we worked with Head Construction, and that will go into their regional BMP on the north side of the tracks. So that, so there's three lots that are cleaned up and one that they're dedicating over to us for utilities.
Don't we have an issue in Van Buskirk with some folks that have built over our right-of-way?
Yes.
When are we going to take that one on?
This year. We'll send some letters. Hopefully, we can get some survey done so we know exactly where they're at. There was some Facebook posts, and I have talked to a couple homeowners that have their gardens down in that area, and they will not be replanting those. So they've definitely seen the work going on and they know it's coming, but it'll be a process for sure.
Any other questions or otherwise, again, I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So move. Second.
A motion and a second on the purchase agreement for drainage areas in the Bluffs and Heartland Business Park. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have an agreement with Sioux Falls for the force main improvement.
So this is a really big project. We contracted with HDR a while back to do kind of a real simple analysis of where our existing line is that ships all of our sewer to Sioux Falls, and they estimated that by 2025, we will most likely have to be using our ponds again if we don't have that second line to Sioux Falls. So that's kind of what started the conversation. And then this last year, we started that preliminary engineering where we started looking at different alignments and sizes of pipe and landowner acquisition, that sort of thing, which generated some conversations with the city of Sioux Falls. City of Sioux Falls, right now, is in the middle of redesigning their headworks building, and they're moving that. And so they are replacing our existing line that's on their property to the new headworks building, and they are paying a hundred percent of those costs. And then they're putting in two new lines, and so this is the prime time to get our line in through there. So this is an agreement with City of Sioux Falls to reimburse them the construction costs for that. They do have a contractor onboard and an engineer designing it. Our construction costs would be about six hundred and eighty thousand is what we are estimating from the headworks building just to the end of their property line. The next item after this would be an amendment to HDR. They would put together our couple of plan sheets that need to go into their set, their design, and put together some specifications, and then also help through that bid process with the city of Sioux Falls. So this project doesn't exactly follow that engineering policy that was approved. In the exceptions part of that policy under 3B, it does talk about how we can forego those level projects and pick an engineering form based off of the preliminary engineering and kind of their input already. HDR has been very involved in Sioux Falls' projects, plus they're doing a lot of the land acquisition with the city of Sioux Falls, so it does make most sense just to go with them.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the force main improvement agreement with Sioux Falls. Any other questions or comment?
I was just going to say that I agree that it makes sense to coordinate at the same time, and I appreciate being proactive because we do not want to use those ponds again.
No.
No. I have a daughter that lives on Seth, and she gets mad. We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Sioux Falls Force Main Engineering Amendment with HDR.
Just over that, right?
Is that-
The same thing. This would be the design for it.
We need to approve that also, right?
Motion to approve. A second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the engineering amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Water Treatment Plant Architectural Design.
So, go ahead.
And this is being ticky-tack here. Page 168, I think that's a typo at the top there. Sioux Falls Water Reclamation. Shouldn't that be just reclamation?
Wow, pretty good catch there, Jack.
Yeah.
That's USF education.
Prove, yeah, prove, too many contracts.
Brian, you want to?
I will turn this one over to the engineer. You have all seen my office. I am not the most aesthetically into person, so.
Good point. Well, I don't know that I am either, but-
Well, it looks nice.
City staff worked with the architect, JLG, with different options on what we can do with our existing building so that it would look nice with the expansion project. They kind of came with this concept right away. They had a much bolder one to begin with, and we toned it back just a little bit. It would be a very dark stain that they would put on our existing building. And the way we were thinking on that was then we didn't want to paint it because it's concrete. You know, if it would chip or something, there'd be a lot of maintenance. But the stain actually soaks into the concrete, and so if it got chipped or something, it would still look normal. And then they could just power wash it if it got dirty or something. And then as you go to the back of the expansion project, it gets lighter. So the front of it's really dark, which matches a lot of the homes that are kind of around Aspen Harbor and in Twin Rivers. And then it gets a little bit lighter gray, and then at the very end, it's more of that concrete light gray color. And then a lot of the landscaping would look a lot like what we do at the pool and try to keep it really simple, something that takes less maintenance. And even around like the wet well facility, we have like a chain link fence there right now. We would put in the fence that matches the one at the pool so that when you're coming into the park, everything looks pretty nice and the same.
How does that concrete, do you know, with the sun? How does it wear?
Does it fade or not?
Yeah, you know, I would assume that it is going to fade over time.
It will. It's pretty common, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, hopefully it would all fade the same throughout.
Definitely.
Yeah. And then we would take the existing letters off the water treatment plant, clean them up, and then use those again, but then put kind of a blue tin or metal water drop next to it just to add a little bit of color to it. So it's a little bit bold, but I think it would look really nice in the park, too.
One other suggestion for that area is the restroom area for the ball dive in right there, too. That's going to need at a minimum some paint, at a minimum, let alone maybe some landscaping to tie in.
What do you think?
The building, I mean?
I would assume, I mean, if we're going to do all this on the treatment plant, I think we need to upgrade the building that's sitting twenty, thirty feet away from it just to try to make it a little bit more aesthetic with the treatment plant.
Yep, that's right there. It's like a- Wait, that's not the back end zone, isn't that your shop and desk?
It's the same.
Oh, it's all hooked in on this part, yeah.
There's a well in there, and then there's storage as well as the restrooms.
Okay.
Right. They're small concession stand, didn't they?
No. No, they used to have a-
They have that coat in our apartment.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't forget the rain barrel out front to water that tree.
I thought Raleigh had a term there won't be a tree.
Raleigh doesn't like the tree. The tree's not going. We're going to save some money on that.
We're going to name it after you. It's right on top of a water valve or- We're moving it a little. No, it's not going there. We can handle this. It's a fifty-deep rim by that tree. What if that's fading?
So there's two different colors of pavement there?
I don't think it's going to look too much like that. The landscaping's going to change. It'll match more of the pool. And then there'll be some concrete that goes around the one side of it.
So is there going to be like a concrete driveway? Because that's a little garage on the right.
Right, and there'll be a concrete driveway that goes, that kind of wraps around the backside of it, too, for delivering chemicals.
Need a motion to approve?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion. Second.
A motion and a second to approve the water treatment plant architectural design. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. West Side Sanitary Sioux Project Big Sioux Easement with the South Dakota Game Fish and Park.
This is a temporary construction easement with the Game Fish and Parks. They have their dog training area right next to our lift station, and when we do that west side sewer project, we're going to need part of their access and part of their driveway for equipment since we're going to be boring underneath of Holly Boulevard there. We, they didn't charge us anything for this. It's a pretty simple construction easement.
With the proof in or not? Motion to approve.
A motion and a second to approve the easement, Big Sioux Easement with Game Fish and Park. Other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The other real new business?
Nope, just a reminder, the district's meeting March 15th. And if anybody's here that's going to go and let us know, we'll get you registered. At that, Yvonne Taylor, the executive director for the district, kind of reviews the recent legislative session and all of the confusion that took place.
Before we adjourn, I do want to make a comment. I've been asked a lot, you know, what my intentions are as far as going forward, but seeking the position of mayor, and I've had a lot of heartfelt thought and prayer over the last month because, quite frankly, I've enjoyed this experience a great deal. My expectations have been, I wasn't too sure what I was getting myself into, but getting to know the city staff, Brian and Christina, you know, Tammy, all of you, it's been extremely, I am so impressed with our city staff. We're lucky, and I had no appreciation for all the work that you go through and the projects that you have. And the city council, you folks, you really do well. I think sometimes, and I've said this to many groups that I've spoken to, I sometimes don't feel like you've probably gotten all the respect that you should have. And so I've learned a lot, and I've enjoyed it a great deal, and I think that's what's made it very difficult for me to come to some kind of a decision, but I have decided that I will not run. I will obviously serve out until the new mayor is elected in April and look forward to doing that. But I, in the, I just want you all to know how, and I mean this from the bottom of my heart, you, we've got a good thing going here, and I do believe in the next four or five years in the city of Brandon, you know, we are on the cusp of just really exploding. I think especially from a retail sector, there's a lot of opportunity, and it's going to be exciting. And I think we've got the right leadership in place to get that done, so thank you. You've made this, this has been a really great and enjoyable experience, and I'll be watching you guys going forward. So thank you. And I visited with Jill this morning, so she kind of-
Mayor, thank you for stepping up and being here. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
It's not easy coming in, especially the first couple of meetings, right? That he had to do.
I've learned a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And like I told people, I've learned a lot, and some of it's good.
That chisels my fire. Now, do we say motion to adjourn?
Yeah, motion to-
Wait, did you say that? Did I say move to approve?
Meeting adjourned.
It was a motion adjourned, we're going to open.
Okay. That's it. This is both. Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Meeting adjourned.